So we'll start, so this is the regular city council meeting for Minatrista for October 5th. And we already, I called the meeting to order at 7:02 and we've said the pledge of allegiance. And now I will do a roll call as I call your name. If you could just call out and say, "I'm here," or some other manner, so we know that you're present. I'm Lisa Wayland, I'm the mayor, I'm present. Council members, Pam Mortenson.
I am here.
Mike Malater.
Here.
Shannon Bruce.
Here.
John Trumperland.
Here.
Our city engineer, Allison Falsky.
Here.
Our city clerk, Chris Lindquist.
Here.
All right, great. Director of Administration, Ellie Palfos.
Here.
Public Works Superintendent, Gary Peters.
Here.
City Administrator, Mike Barone.
I am here.
Finance Director, Brian Grimm.
I'm here.
Uh oh, we don't, Brian is here, all right. Community Development Director, David Abel.
I am here.
Attorney with Kennedy and Graven, Ron Beatty.
Here.
And our Chief of Police, Paul Falls.
Here.
All right, so everyone's here, so that concludes our roll call. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none then, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
This is Shannon.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made that motion, I believe Ms. Mortenson seconded that, is that correct? Yes. All right, then all those in favor will signify with aye. I, Lisa Wayland, say yes. So council members, Pam Mortenson.
Yes.
Mike Malater.
Yes.
Shannon Bruce.
Aye.
John Trumperland.
Aye.
Motion passes, we have approved our agenda. We don't have any special presentations this evening. And we have two individuals joining us for some business items, so I will give you the opportunity to speak at those business items. Just kind of for clarification, the, we have consent agenda items, so we won't pull them, there was one for the rezone, it's the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone at 780 North Branch Road. Is there any reason anybody wishes to pull that off the consent agenda? All right, so what will happen is, we'll leave this on the consent agenda. And if it passes, then your Comprehensive Plan Amendment and your rezone is then completed. So with that, I'll move on to consent agenda items consists of, A, approve our work session meeting minutes from September 21st, 2020. Approve our regular meeting minutes from September 21st, 2020. A resolution to approve our claims. B is a resolution to certify the delinquent utilities to the 2021 taxes. E is a resolution to certify the delinquent land use special fees to the 2021 taxes. F is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezone at 780 North Branch Road. This also includes a resolution to approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And Ordinance 460 amend city code by amending the official zoning map. And a resolution authorizing the publication of Ordinance 460 by title and summary. Any items you wish to remove?
This is Shannon Bruce, I'd like, I'd like to remove the minutes from September 21, item B, and C, the claims, as well.
All right, so we have approved the work session meeting minutes. B, certify the delinquent utilities, certify land use, and the Comprehensive Plan one, number F. Though, any further questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
So moved, this is Pam.
All right, ma'am, Pam has made that motion. Is there a second?
This is John T., I'll second.
All right, and Mr. Trumperland made that second, then all those in favor will signify with aye. I make, I say aye, Lisa Wayland. Next, we'll move on to Shannon Bruce.
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland.
Aye.
Mr. Malater.
Aye.
And Ms. Mortenson.
Aye.
All those, so motion passes, 5-0. So we'll move on to regular meeting minutes, I believe that was the one you had removed. Ms. Bruce?
Yes, thank you. Um, if you go to page 11 in the packet, it's where we're discussing the CARES Act spending. And there's a statement about halfway down the page where it says the council is in agreement. And then a couple paragraphs down from there, it says it was the consensus of the council. And I would just like to make sure, Ms. Lindquist, when you're, when you're doing minutes and you use the word consensus, or the council is in agreement, consensus for the dictionary, it means agreement among all the people involved. And I don't think we had everyone in agreement here in both of those spots. And you can use words like most of the council members, but consensus means all. And so I'd just be careful how you use that, and I prefer you change the wording there. Because we haven't voted on how to use the CARES Act funds yet. And there could possibly be a variety of scenarios where we consider coming up with different scenarios, and we just haven't voted on any of them yet. So I think to say the council is in agreement on this is premature, so I'd like that wording to be changed. Thanks.
And the rest of the council, how do you feel? Um, that's fine with me.
I'm fine with that.
All right. So the wording should say it was the, the council, Ms. Bruce, how did you want that worded?
Um, you could just say, "Most of the council agreed," if you, if you want to say that. But just, I wouldn't say.
How about the majority? How about the majority?
Or, or the majority is fine, yeah, but there's a variety of ways you could state that. I was just gonna leave it up to Ms. Lindquist.
Okay, so it'll say it was the majority of the council that does, some of the CARES funds be spent on appropriate costs. That's where you're making that change?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we haven't, we haven't defined what, we don't know, I don't know what appropriate cost means in that context, so this is gonna come up again, and we'll, and we'll vote on it, and then we can record how people vote.
Okay, all right. Any other changes? So do you want to make a motion to approve the minutes with that change?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that, Pam.
All right, so Ms. Bruce made that motion, and Ms. Mortenson seconded that. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, then all those in favor will signify with aye. Mr. Malater.
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland.
Aye.
Ms. Bruce.
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson.
Aye.
And I vote aye, Lisa Wayland, motion passes. So we'll move on to the claims. Ms. Bruce, you had a question on the claims?
Yes, as part of the claims, we had asked previously that invoices over $200,000 be submitted to the council in our packets, and it was, thank you for including that. If we go to page 25, that is that invoice for the water tower. And on page 25, the third item down, it's actually item number 25 as well. It talks about providing the city of Minatrista logo in two locations with a height of 15 feet per logo. That was something that we had discussed about getting costs on, but we, the council never gave direction on whether to put the logo on the water tower, or just to put the words Minatrista on the water tower. So I was surprised to see this $24,000 on this invoice, because we hadn't given them direction on that yet. Unless, because, go ahead.
You're correct. Gary or Mike, is that part of the invoice? My understanding was it wasn't part of the invoice? Or would we get a credit for it?
Madam Mayor, Council.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I will just let you know that we understand the concern, I had the same concern. Mr. Peters had the same concern. We've been meeting weekly with the folks via virtual meetings to get progress on the water tower and its rehab process. And this came up last week on Thursday, and so we obviously remember what the council said, they weren't interested in a logo, or potentially weren't interested in a logo. And so I think this is kind of standard fare, I think we just had our name dropped into logo, most cities do logo, understand that this council maybe doesn't want to, and that's fine. So today, we've been pinning down costs on what it will be to not do a logo. And I think the mayor is right, as she spoke about just a second ago, that it will probably end up being a credit or a deduct. I don't know if it'll be a change order, but it'll just be a credit, and we'll be able to talk about those. I was gonna bring this up under my staff report, but if council's interested in quickly discussing it now, we certainly can. And then I have one last item to bring up under my staff report.
Madam Mayor.
We didn't, yeah, Ms. Falsky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd just like to clarify as well that the pay voucher that's been submitted, that $24,000 is not being requested at this time. So the pay voucher shows paying zero of that line item at this time.
Okay, thank you, that's what my understanding was too, so, yep. Okay, so the total includes all of the items that are listed, it would be in the far right-hand column, correct?
No, because it was over 200,000, that's why they put it in the packet, it's the 235,
The items, Madam Mayor and Council, the items would, it would be.
It's out of, we're. Column G.
Yep. Yeah, it'd be under that work completed, and then the total completed and stored to date, less the retainage, that's what it would be. The far right column talks about the actual retainage. And column H is the balance to finish, which, which I think was the 24,000 that we talked about, the logo is in the balance to finish, so that sort of ties it all together, I guess.
So we're not paying for it right now?
I believe so.
We just need to, okay, we just need to have that clarified. So the 24,000 is not included in this?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, all right. All right. Does that answer your question, Ms. Bruce?
Yes, and I, I would welcome Mr. Barone to elaborate on that, if he wants to now, if everybody doesn't mind.
Sure, Ms. Barone?
I have, yeah, I have no problem doing that. So the, as Ms. Bruce pointed out, the dollar amount for the logo is 24,000. To just put the name of the city of Minatrista, the word Minatrista on the logo is $5,000 per time. So you could do it on one, or put it on twice, one on each half of the tank of the, or you could just put it on once. So if you did it twice, it would be a $10,000 cost, and that would mean you would have a deduct from that 24,000 of, down to 10, a savings of 14,000. Or if you put it on just one side of the tank, which I believe our other tank is just on one side of the tank, you could do that. And it would just be, and as I explained, I think to a couple people today, including Ms. Bruce, you know, there's a lot that goes into it, it's not just slapping the name on there. They're considering the height of the tank, the circumference of the tank, the length of our name, Minatrista, a lot longer than like Mound, for instance. So that all has to be considered, and then you want to be able to read it. And so I think what they did is they put together a mock-up, and if I can, I can share my screen, and so, I don't know. So now you see, that's the tower with the word Minatrista on one side. It would be in the city blue color, could have it in black, but there's no difference in cost, and the city blue, that's our color, so, main color of our logo. So that would be the cost for $5,000. So if, if council is okay with that particular, I believe that's the font, I'm not exactly sure, but they just put that on there as a mock-up today to show people that would be participating in this meeting. And if that's what the council wants to go with, we'll direct WSB to slide $5,000 into the cost for the lettering instead of $24,000 for the logo. And I appreciate any feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. All right, council feedback? I think we already discussed one time about the logo and decided that the cost wasn't, and we, I thought we had even a lower cost than that, and we had already discussed that we wouldn't do the logo. So maybe I'm missing something here. So anybody else want to weigh in? Basically, it's do you want nothing, or do you want the city lettering, you know, saying Minatrista on it?
This is John.
This is Shannon.
I recall, at least, at least my recollection of where this came up was, and I don't recall us discussing it on the updating or the fixing painting of this one, but of the new tower.
Yeah, you're right.
That we had a discussion, that on the new one, that we were gonna forget the logo and just go with the city name. And so, I mean, I see this, if we're doing it on the new one, each time we update the existing water towers, we should stick with that pattern. So just putting the city on once in blue is fine with me.
Yeah, okay, you're right, we discussed it on the new one, you're correct on that, yep. Okay, Shannon?
I agree.
Okay, Pam?
I agree.
All right, Mike?
I agree, and we want to add, Mike, can you confirm that that's also the plan with the new tower? Because I think we discussed it, I don't know if we discussed just once or twice, but I think John's point is valid, that we just want to be consistent. So I agree just once, and just make sure the new tower is consistent with that.
Yep, all right.
So Mayor and Council, we will definitely give direction to WSB above, since they're helping Gary and the city coordinate this rehab project, and we'll check in with the folks at SEH and make sure that they understand that we're gonna go with lettering on the tower only, just city name on one side.
Yep, all right, great, thank you. All right, any other questions on the claims? Quick question, this might, oh, excuse me, Lisa. Go ahead. This might be really stupid, but could you make sure somebody decides where on the tower it should go? And not leaving it up to the company to decide? I mean, which direction to point it? Maybe Gary could decide.
I'm not sure about that, so. We can certainly talk with them and figure out which is, which seems to make the most sense, so.
Okay, okay.
We don't do that every day, but some of these people do, so we'll look to them, their expertise, so.
All right. All right, any other questions then, on the claims? If none, then is there a motion to approve the claims as presented? Because this wasn't part of the claims.
So moved, this is Pam.
All right, and is there a second then?
I will second, John T.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortenson and seconded by Mr. Trumperland to approve the claims as presented. Then I'll go down the list, if you, if you vote aye, say yes. I vote aye, Lisa Wayland. And Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Malater?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
All right, so that concludes our consent agenda items. And just in case the gentleman is still on the phone regarding the Plan Amendment and Rezone that has been passed, so you don't need to say anything. Your Plan Amendment and Rezoning has been approved. So now we'll move on to our business items. First, it's approve the Reparion View Shed setback variance at 1340 Morning View Drive. I'm gonna start with David Abel, and the applicant or representative of the applicant for the Haley's is here this evening. And if he wishes to speak after Mr. Abel, you can do so at that time. So Mr. Abel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. The applicants have made an application for a Reparion View Shed setback variance for the addition of a screened porch to the existing home at 1340 Morning View Drive. The porch will be 18 feet by 16 feet in size, and the porch will measure 16 feet into the Reparion View Shed setback. Ultimately, the porch will be a total of 185.2 feet from the ordinary high water mark. So as you can see from the packet and the aerial photos, this property and others around it on either side are quite a distance from, from the lake, where we have 185 feet, given this measurement from the OHW. The staff report does outline that the request meets the provisions of the zoning code, specifically section 505.05 subdivision nine, where we talk about the variance criteria. You can see in the staff report, it talks to each of those standards and how this request does meet those and meets the reasonable criteria. The Planning Commission did review this item at their meeting September 28th. They did hold a public hearing. No one spoke during the public hearing. The applicant and the representatives were there and did speak, not, not during the public hearing, but were at the meeting and did speak to it. But again, no one spoke during the actual public hearing. There was one written comment that was provided per the notice that was published in the newspaper. You can see that's been attached as part of your packet this evening. The Planning Commission did vote 7-0 to recommend approval of this item to the city council. There is a resolution as such, as part of your package, which is on page 56. You can see there's findings of fact, and then conditions that would go with this. Staff is also recommending approval of the Reparion View variance, and can stand for any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you. Let's, I'll go to the applicant. If you have anything you'd like to add, or any comments you'd like to make, you can do so at this time.
Hi, this is Dan Hammond calling. David did a good job in explaining everything, I think the process was really, really smooth with dealing with the city of Minatrista for the first time. And I think everything is gonna be, I think everything is explained fairly well in the drawings, and I appreciate your guys' time. And I think that should do it.
All right, thank you. And if we have questions for you, I'm sure you'll be around, so. All right, council, any questions of staff? Okay, apparently not. So is there then a motion to approve the Reparion View Shed setback variance at 1340 Morning View Drive?
So moved, this is Pam.
All right, Ms. Mortenson made that motion, is there a second?
I will second, John T.
Okay, I think that was Mr. Trumperland seconded that. Any further questions or comments? All right, hearing none then, all those in favor will signify with aye. I, Lisa Wayland, vote yes. Pam Mortenson.
Aye.
And Mike Malater?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
And Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0. So Mr. Hammond, you can tell your clients they are good to go. All right, next we have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, next we have approval of our fertilizer and weed control contract, Mr. Peters.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Tonight we have the proposal for the fertilization, we control 23 city-owned sites. We sent it out to seven of the local companies around, along with our next item to the maintenance. We only received two quotes back for the fertilization that we got back. It was for a three-year contract with a 30-day out clause, if something would go wrong. The reason that we like doing the three-year contract with them is if we do this every year, we would, we were getting different companies, and it was just a training nightmare to get them into the groove of everything, and then by the time they got done, the year season would be over, and then we would get somebody else and start over. That's why we decided to start doing a three-year contract. Out of the two that brought back, we'll be doing four applications for the city parks, as well as the city all campus, but only weed control for the city wellhouses and lift stations, just to keep the dandelion population down, so we know fertilization. The two that we got back was from Scott's Lawn Care and from True Green. True Green is the vendor that we will ask you to approve. They have been here longer than I have, at least for 10-plus years. They've been our contractor, and the price went up slightly from last year, but it was very favorable. So I asked for a motion to approve an agreement with True Green for the fertilization and weed control services for the years of 2021, 2022, 2023, growing seasons for the city parks, city all campus, with an annual cost of $9,888 for each of the three seasons for the campus and the city hall and parks, and $820 per year for the wellhouses and water tower and lift station sites.
All right, for a total of $10,708. Okay, all right. Council, any questions? All right, then is there a motion to approve as presented? So the motion would be to adopt the resolution approving an agreement with True Green for '21, '22, and '23, total amount of $10,708 per year.
This is Shannon, so moved.
All right, motion has been made by Ms. Bruce, is there a second?
I will second, John T.
All right, and Mr. Trumperland made the second, so all those in favor will signify with aye. I, Lisa Wayland, say yes. Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
And Mr. Malater?
Aye.
Although, so that's 5-0, motion passes. So we'll move on to our next business item, and that's approving the lawn maintenance contract. Mr. Peters, again.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Today we're also bringing back, bringing to you the seasonal lawn mowing and related services for all, for 30 different sites within this city, including parks, the campus, as well as wellhouses and water tower as such. With this, we went out to six local companies. We did end up getting three quotes back. This would be again with a 30-day clause for another three-year contract, again for the same reasons, we're not retraining someone in every year to try to get them to a standard that we would like. The company that has the low bid this year is again Vanish Property Maintenance, they've been the contractor for the last six seasons. They came in a little bit slightly higher than last year, or than the last contract. Last contract, they kept their prices locked across the same all year, or all three years. This year, I did notice they did increase it slightly every year. So did the last contractor, Scott's, is the last year only. Still, they came in very low than what is expected. So I'm asking for a motion to approve an agreement with Advantage Property Maintenance for mowing and water-related services with a 30-day out for city-owned properties for years for the growing seasons of 2021, 2022, and 2023, for an annual cost of $58,220 for 2021, $61,080 for 2022, and $65,226 for 2023, for a total of $184,526 for the total of a three-year contract.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peters. Council, any questions of Gary?
This is Shannon, Mr. Peters, do you have, do you happen to know what we paid for in 2020? Do you have that in front of you?
Um, I can look it up here, hang on one second.
And I, I guess, just, just for, I, I like to see what we, what we paid the previous year when we, when we're looking at establishing another contract. It's nice to see what we had before in the future, but-
Yeah, it's just, I'm, I'm trying to get to my spot here, my computer's slow here, hang on one second. I got my daughter doing schoolwork, she's home doing college work, and she's syncing up bandwidth.
[laughing]
Thought it'd been twenty eighteen. So, this is mowing.
Unless Brian knows the answer.
Look, I had just under fifty thousand dollars is what we would have paid last year.
Under, I'm sorry, what did you say? Fifty or sixty?
Just under, uh, forty, looks, I, I'm trying to read this sideways, about forty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. We paid that for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty across the board.
So they didn't raise it for three years?
Did not raise it for three years this year. He did go up every year. The Jim's Lawn and Landscape, when they bid this, I do not see what they were at. I do not have that in front of me. It's, they were at, that year they were at fifty, just under, just over fifty-three thousand, and for that year, and they've got eighty-three, they did not raise their price last year that year either. They, uh, are at eighty-three thousand. Scott's Lawn Care did not bid that year. They're a hundred and twenty-six across, where with one raise in twenty twenty-three.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, anybody else have questions? Or comments? All right, hearing none then. Um, is there a motion to approve? And it would be approving, um, advantage property services for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three with a thirty-day out clause for, um, land mowing and mo- mowing-related services.
This is John T.
Some moved.
Some moved.
Okay, Mr. Trumperlin made that motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. Is that okay, Ms. Mortensen?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, then all those in favor will signify with aye. Um, I vote aye, Lisa Wayland, Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
And Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
All right, so motion passes five oh. That concludes our business items, so we'll move on to administrative items. Um, Mr. Brony, you have a staff report?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor and city council, I do have a few items to discuss. Um, if you notice, tonight we don't have, uh, discussion of our CARES funding. You'll see that at our next city council meeting on October nineteenth. Um, also, I think at the last, uh, council meeting, uh, Ally Polf was talked about Darcy Andrew Atkinson starting. She did start on Monday, September twenty-eighth, a week ago, so we're glad she's here. Um, the fire district concept meeting that was supposed to take place last Friday, uh, October second, actually did not happen. The meeting the day before was canceled. Um, as you recall, we did discuss that at the city council about the idea of moving forward with a fire district, and, uh, this council agreed to kind of keep those talks rolling, uh, for the time being. Um, I know Saint Boniface was not able to, to do that, so there was no reason for us to meet. I believe they're discussing that with their council this week, so I don't have a rescheduled date, but that's the situation. So once Saint Bonnie kind of reports back to the two fire chiefs, I'm sure they'll go about rescheduling this meeting. And then our next meeting is on Monday, October nineteenth, two weeks from tonight, and just wanted to throw out the possibility that we may have a five o'clock start again. Uh, that's because the one budget item tonight that we were going to do but decided not to between last meeting and this meeting, uh, we ended up moving to October nineteenth in order to dedicate that time tonight for the Rhodes Open House. And I think that's probably a good thing, we could have, probably got done around six thirty or so tonight, and that might have been rushed to do our, um, our, our budget. So we'll just push those all to, we'll push this one to the October nineteenth work session, and, uh, we'll discuss as staff, but I'm just letting you know, we may have a five o'clock start. We obviously will let you know about that, um, in the agenda packet that goes out, but it could be a five thirty, but, uh, it might be five o'clock as well.
Well, Mr. Brony, let's, Mr. Brony, let's ask council, is, would a five o'clock start be a possibility for everyone? Mr. Molitor, would that be an option for you?
Uh, that, that works fine, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Trumperlin?
That's fine.
All right, and Ms. Bruce?
Yes, that's fine.
And Ms. Mortensen?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so just want to make sure, otherwise if it didn't work, we'd have to figure something else out. All right, Mr. Brony.
Up, good to know, Mayor, thank you. So those are all the items I have, and I'm not sure if anybody else on city staff has anything. They don't, they didn't come forward until we could put it on the agenda, but just give them a chance now.
Okay, anybody else?
If not, you can move on to council reports.
All right. We will move on to council reports. Um, yeah, I'll just do a quick report. Um, the fire district, uh, meeting I was gonna be at, well, that was, that will hopefully be rescheduled in the near future. And also, we will have a personnel committee meeting to talk about, um, union contracts, so we'll see where that goes. And, uh, that's really all I have. We'll move on to Ms. Mortensen?
Uh, there are no updates with WCC. Um, I am going to the personnel committee meeting tomorrow for union contracts as well.
All right. And Mr. Trumperlin?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, and Ms. Bruce?
Um, I, I just have a, a question about the union contracts meeting. Do, do you, Mayor Wayland and, and Councilmember Mortensen actually sit in on the, the union negotiations?
Uh, I can answer that one. Uh, no.
Sure.
What they, what they do is they're a sounding board for us, and if, uh, we get to a certain point where we, uh, have to talk strategy, or if we have to weigh a final decision, we like to run it by the personnel committee. And then, of course, that goes before the entire council, before anything is approved, but they do not participate in the actual union contract negotiations. That's never happened since I've been here, and I hope it never does.
And can you explain why you feel that way?
Uh, because I don't think that's the role of the city council. The council is to provide guidance, and we're the boots-on-the-ground workers, and I think that includes the task of doing uni- union negotiations.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I do have a, I discussed with Mr. Brony this morning about a, a call that I got from a constituent about some hydrants that are being flushed evidently behind. Um, there, there's a hydrant that has had water shooting out of it between the Shell Station and, um, between the Shell Station on Three Points and Eddie's Auto, and there's also another hydrant behind Hilltop that, um, water has just been pouring out of those hydrants, and it's, it appears to be chlorinated water that is, uh, this person was concerned about it possibly, that chlorinated water actually running off into our stormwater, and, um, was questioning whether the city had a permit to discharge that water from those hydrants. Do you know anything about this, Gary?
Well, I did have a chance to speak with Gary, and I appreciate you bringing it back, bringing it up, uh, tonight, Councilmember Bruce. So Gary, why don't you just give, uh, the entire council the information you gave me this afternoon? So I apologize for not bringing this up.
Good, thanks, Mike. Um, Madam Mayor and council, yes, we have three hydrants that are, uh, open in the system right now. They are equipped with, uh, pressure-released valves on them. With the tower being out of service, the main pump in wellhouse number one, um, is on a, um, variable-speed startup. What happens is this'll run pump, and it'll just run and ramp right up to the point where we'll overload the system. Um, the pri- the, the optimal amount of pressure in the system is around seventy PSI. What these are set for is to discharge water when it gets above seventy PSI. With the tower, the, the, the water's stable, it's set that way, we don't need this, but with this, with the pump that runs, when the well pump is hammering so hard, we're gonna get higher pressures in areas. What this leads to is, um, water heater relief valves blowing out in basements. They're set to roughly, depends on, on the brand, but once they hit like eighty, eighty-five PSI, they can start to rupture, and it blows and discharges water, which would cause a flood in the basement. What these are set up to do is we have a meter on them to track the amount of water, but what it's doing is it's discharging water out of the system once the pressure reaches a certain height. During the night, they're not gonna run hardly at all, but during the day with a lot of water running, the pump is, is trying to keep up at well one, to keep up with the demand out there. So that's why it's discharging the water there. It's keeping our, protecting the entire system, not only ours, but definitely in the homes. As far as being the chlorinated water, yes, is this chlorinated fluoride. It's no different than when we flush hydrants that we discharge the water out of the street and runs down into the, uh, catch basins and into the ponds and stuff. Uh, your fear of chlorinated water, if you would take a glass of wa- our city water, put it in a sealed jar, and then take a chlor- a chlorine sample, you'll get a chlorine residual. The reason that we have that, we do that this way is as soon as we take that sample out of the hydrant, we have to put the cover on immediately. Once chlorinated water hits oxygen, it starts to bleed off. If you would put a glass of, uh, our water on the counter that's just below the faucet, if you had measured right away, you would get a chloride reading. After it sits for, um, thirty seconds to a minute, there'll be no chloride left. Once it dissipates, once it's here, it dissipates. Same thing is happening right now, the, as you're flushing it and running it down, as soon as it hits the open air, it starts to dissipate. Um, there's chlorinated, they call them chlorinators on there. Uh, basically what they are is an aerator. As soon as you can spread the water out farther, see the wa- the water molecules separated, they disperse. That's what we have on in the back of our trucks, the diffusers to help not only to keep the water from spraying everywhere, but it helps to spread out the molecules to eliminate the chlorine in the water. So, but then, it'll, it'll take care of itself naturally. We're at the recommended chlorine levels for the Department of Health, we're not over, um, and, you know, so we are keeping it within our, our limits. And just to remember, there is chloride naturally in water. I mean, we, we're from, uh, point two to point seven, or almost point, I'd say point six five, parts million in, uh, pure, in chloride right from the ground. So we're kinds of, we don't have to treat very much. So the fear of the, being chlorinated, it will go away.
Okay, and, and there, there are concern about the city having a permit to do that? Did the, is the city, does the city need a permit to do that, or can you just flush?
Well, we, we don't, no, we don't need a permit. It's like I said, it's similar to doing the hydrants when we flush. The only difference between when we flush hydrants is we don't technically realize how much water we're, we're releasing. We do have meters on these to know how much we are, 'cause at the end of the year, or beginning of the year, we have to report to the DNR, how much water have our wells pumped? How much of that water have we sold? And how much of that water has been basically lost? But we need to identify, so that's why when we fill out a report, um, we can say, just for easy numbers, we pumped a hundred and fifty million gallons, we sold a hundred and twenty-five million gallons. Out of the twenty-five million gallons that are left over, we can say three million was used for, you know, this here, you know, was used for, you know, to relieve pressure on that. The rest of it, you know, was, would be lost water. We have been well within our ten percent of, uh, what they call wasted water, or, or not accounted for, full of water for, ever since I've been here. So we've always been within our ten percent, so, um, it is-
Well, thank you, yeah. Thanks, I, I, I don't want to take too much of your time. I'll, I'll just refer them to you if they have further questions, but I think just listening to this first meeting recording will be fine for them. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thanks, Gary. Um, Water One Oh One, I guess. Um, thanks. Uh, anybody else? Um, let's see. Mike Molitor, did you have any reports?
Uh, yes, um, I was at the planning commission meeting, uh, last Monday. Um, a- as you saw on our agenda tonight, uh, two of the items we've discussed, the third item that we didn't discuss, uh, yet, uh, is a proposal for a solar farm. Um, and I won't go into all the details, as you can reference the, uh, planning commission packet, uh, if you'd like more detail. However, um, as many of you may recall, I, I don't remember exactly when this happened, but I believe it was in the two thousand fifteen timeframe. Um, we changed the city ordinance to allow, uh, ground mounted solar. Uh, we had some requests from residents to be able to put, um, ground mounted solar, uh, on their parcels. Uh, roof mounted solar had always been allowed, but ground mounted was, was not. Um, and we had, um, changed it to, to allow that. And I think part of what drove that, I, I do recall one particular request, uh, on a road off of, um, um, North Arm, oh, not, not too far from Burl Oak, uh, wasn't North Arm per se, it's one of the Peter Roads, where someone was requesting to do that. Um, and, and so the, the planning commission reviewed that and was sent to the council, and ultimately it was approved. Um, in that ordinance, uh, there's a lot of language that references, uh, side yard, backyard setbacks, uh, matching principal structure, uh, things of the, that you would expect to see when you're constructing a solar garden in an area where there's a home attached, you know, and generally, small parcels of land, maybe five acres, maybe ten. Um, what was brought to the planning commission was a site review plan, so really wasn't, uh, uh, any kind of a PUD or conditionally used permit or, or any kind of variance request. Uh, but this plan, um, encompasses approximately thirty-six acres, um, with three separate solar gardens of one megawatt per garden. Uh, and there's some history as to why that, why it's done in three, um, that's, as to what's allowed, uh, under state statute, uh, and Excel, uh, ordinances, um, regulations, I should say. Um, so the planning commission had some concerns about, um, what the intent was here. So, uh, I think staff is working on, on that, and probably we'll see that next time, but, uh, just, and I think, I, I know that there was some concern of residents as well that was voiced, uh, with that. So, uh, a heads up to the, uh, to the council that, uh, we will likely be seeing that one coming, um, unlike the other two, which we saw tonight, so.
Yeah, I think the pla- I've, um, gotten some calls and emails from, um, various individuals, and I think the question is more the, uh, the ordinance and so on, and I think staff will be looking at that, and, um, we'll have to be looking at that as well, and maybe, you know, I, I know I have a number of questions as well, so that'll come back, I believe, at our October nineteenth meeting. Um, again, like I said, staff will look at it as well, so, thank you, Mr. Molitor. Um, that, uh, concludes all of our reports, I believe. So with that, um, anybody wanting to make a motion to adjourn, we can then be adjourned.
This is Shannon, some moved.
Okay, Ms. Bruce made that motion, and Mr. Molitor seconded. All those in favor will signify with aye. Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
And Ailisa Wayland say aye, so motion passes five oh, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, and we'll meet again on the nineteenth. Good evening.
Bye.
Thank you.